Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the budget meeting for the capital budget for April 4th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Um. New business is the capital budget, Dan, or Tom?
Yes, I mean, this is the, I guess, the the Budget Committee looked at the capital budget and has comments on it. I mean, I I let Charles make the presentation for himself, but yeah, at some point, I would like to have a meeting with Charles and other members of the Budget Committee to go over some, some items.
Okay. We would be happy to meet with you then.
And we have a PowerPoint, correct?
Uh, yeah, let me, uh. Oh, give me one second. I open the, okay. Okay. I mean.
That's it. If you could just go on up to the first slide.
Do you, do you see this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe if you go to like the full view and just sort of. Thanks for holding this. Appreciate it. Here we're doing the budget. We were tasked to work on the capital budget. So you've seen some of the emails coming through with what's been prepared to date. I put together a presentation to, I know you guys have about an hour and a half. But I'll try to make this relatively quick, go through the presentation with a little bit of background and kind of talk about how this falls. And then with respect to what I shared with you where the like five different sources stand from this point. And then ideally, we'd be able to, you know, take some of the highlights from this presentation and then we can open up the Excel file that I sent. So Dan would be navigating. We can go through that and maybe go to some of the bigger points and questions to just familiarize you guys with, you know, what's on the table with outstanding questions. And then try to take that from there to kind of bring it to fruition and completion, ideally by the, the meeting on the 15th. You know, we can integrate when we take them here. We have the 15th, and then with respect to the budget deadline, could try to incorporate any additional changes from there.
Also, he's saying an hour and a half?
He knows because of the, well, it's our teammate. You're just late.
Okay.
Okay, so then let him go.
Well, just a reminder, we do have a chief's night tonight, which begins at 7:00 PM.
He's very.
And usually.
Right.
You guys have about an hour.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
I may have to leave.
Go to the next slide, please. Alright, so I'm just gonna do an overview, then the approach and analysis. From there, look at the capital budget itself with highlights and, and excerpts that I incorporated into this. And then recommendations and next steps from there. And then again, after this, we could pull up the, the bigger document, which is harder to navigate. Yeah, try to go through some of those details. To the next one. Okay, overview and the next ones. Very quick, just difference between the operating budget and the capital budget. I imagine you guys understand that delineation, just in the event that you don't, you know, the operating budget.
Put the screen down. I think it'll be able to see it better.
Okay, great.
You didn't realize it, people. Is that any better?
It's totally better.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm a D I J.
Right. Right. That's about right.
Yeah, I'm gonna need bifocals for this.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie.
I just also think he's presenting from a notes person.
Operating budget, capital budget. Operating, you guys are obviously very familiar with, with the day to day examples being, you know, employee salaries and benefits. On the revenue side, you have the sales tax revenue. Property tax, things like office supplies versus the capital budget, which is going to be more for the long. So context, you have an operating budget that is, you know, in a 48 plus million dollar budget, approaching 50 million dollars. The capital budget with all of the projects that were open to consideration, which I'll go through in the past, and the most recent adopted budget, you had $112 million of the projects on the table. That's over a five year period. You know, versus an annual operating budget of 48, nine, but just to paint the picture in terms of scale and the importance of this, which I, I think we're all familiar with, but just for the public as well. You know, the next slide. So, and I just want to take two minutes because you guys know me, I think. It's just who I am. I didn't introduce myself. So I'm the chairman of the Board of American Budget Committee, and I'm joined by the other members of Budget Committee. I've been the chairman of the Budget Committee for four years. I currently work for the second largest multifamily real estate development company in the country. Finishing up the 300 unit developed, and that was a $100 million budget, $100 million project. Prior to this, I was the vice president for one of the largest, at one of the largest investment banks in the world, and their controllers group focusing on cost analytics and budgeting. So just a little bit of background of who I am, why I'm up here. Alright, so purpose and prioritization. Purpose, we're looking to establish priorities. We're looking to align with our strategic goals as a village.
Hopefully, Dan will.
There you are.
Alright.
And we're trying to develop a multi-year plan. And this is important for projects and for inclusion. We want to actually be able to execute on what's going into the plan. And then with that, determining an appropriate debt service limit is a really important objective that the committee has identified as, as really being a, a priority and so consider going forward with what that limit gets set at, and we'll talk more about that. And then secondly, prioritization criteria. We've talked a lot about this over the last few years. There were extensive efforts that went into getting feedback from department heads to help identify priorities and, you know, a model was developed. We found it to be a lot of time that went into it, but hard to understand and became very subjective. So this is difficult, but we had in an adopted framework that we put together a couple of years ago. Laid out these criteria. So safety being the first, a legal requirement being second, operational impact, infrastructure improvement, and D F one equipment. The note at the, I don't know if you can see the screen, but the note at the bottom of this is pretty critical because what would jump out at me immediately is, why isn't infrastructure improvement fourth on this list when we're talking about a bridge that could collapse? Right? So anything that has an impact on safety is going to go to the top of the list automatically. Versus an infrastructure improvement that's discretionary, that's not imminent, there's not urgency, and you're not at risk with respect to safety and the like, right? So I just wanted to clarify that, and that applies to all of these. So if you have a vehicle replacement at the bottom of the list, but if you have a fire truck that you need and a firefighter is going to get killed if you don't replace it, that goes to the top of the list as, as, as a one, you know, hard. Versus you're buying a vehicle because you want a new car, right? Those are two very different extremes.
So I was reading it differently before I saw the hierarchy, meaning one equals higher priority. So I'm just reading it as like what categorizing it by necessary for maintaining health, vehicle, things that need to be replaced, then, you know, maintaining infrastructure. That's how I was reading it. I wasn't reading it by hierarchy of what, what's most important, but I think if there was a most important would be by the the expiration of either the infrastructure or the vehicles, and that's what I would think of as priority. Because if you have a, a vehicle that is expiring maybe in five years versus the one who's like, it's already expired and needs to be replaced now, that's where I possibly would categorize.
Yeah, so yeah, I think what trustee, you guys are read. You know, when with our fire apparatus, you know, there are scheduled lives for those pieces of equipment when they should be replaced. It may not necessarily be on its last legs, but, you know, in a National Fire Protection Association guidelines say, you know, you should be replacing your ladder truck every 15 years, every 20 years. You know, we want to maintain those. We, we want to maintain those life cycles because we want to make sure that the equipment is still, you know, capable of being classified as a front service vehicle, frontline service vehicle.
So like an example, we did the 1.9 million dollar fire truck that has been, you know, there was a resolution for it. You guys are probably familiar with it. That's been around for a little while and the information that was provided on it at the time, to Dan's point, it, it indicated that it was a 25 year useful life. There's an NFPA requirement that those be replaced. So right off the bat, that would suggest that that needs to happen, and it very well may. A more complicated next step though would be, do you need that fire truck? And then that relates to other questions. We have multiple firehouses. So that would need to be analyzed broadly, and that becomes in itself a complex involved analysis. But it's an example of, there's a lot of work to do within a lot of these projects and decisions to determine what degree of a priority.
And I think that if we, if, if I'm not a budget, I'm not on your level of analyzing budgets and everything, but I think that based upon what I've seen is that too. I don't know if there's such a thing of too much analyzing and just too much talk, then we miss out on opportunities to actually get the things that we need. So I don't know if there's going to be a, a process that you're going to explain that maybe bash tack in the most efficient way and most responsible way.
Yeah, I mean, not, not to minimize the, the work of the Budget Committee or, or any committee, for the example, I think in general, they, they call that paralysis by analysis, and I, I'm not saying that's happening, but I'm just saying that that's, I think that's your, your, might be, might be your fear, trustee, as I read.
Thank you, Dan.
But like another example would be like recrea playground equipment. At, at a certain point, you, we have to have the playground equipment inspected every year. And sometimes, you know, playgrounds, we just can't replace the equipment any, any longer because it's not manufactured. And then, then that becomes a, a safety issue for people on the equipment. So as, as long as, I, I think the, the term public safety is, I, I think there's a different, I think there's a definition that the Budget Committee has, which is safety to the public, you know, based on the maintenance and upgrade and upkeep of the equipment. Is that a, a fair representation, Charles?
Also, also the work, also the.
Yeah, yeah, all of that, yeah.
Yeah, I think Ellen, I'm sorry, Ellen, you had a comment.
No, I was going to address what you said. I think if we go back to what Charles said a few minutes ago, that a couple of years back, we recommended, you know, a priority ranking order. Somehow that became a very complex thing with all this waiting and it became very difficult to figure out, and I think what we're trying to do with this is get back to a simpler view.
Good, okay.
Either itself in a safety and health issue, or it is, you know, it's either mandated or it isn't, you know, and we go from there.
And as, as we'll see as we go through this presentation, and it, the irony is, is it something I've been very vocal about and very against, which is a, a wish list of projects that is everything you could possibly think of and utilizing that as a budget. But what I did hear, because I don't want to use my discretion, generally, there's a couple of exceptions. Pulling things out is that I left everything in. And then I assigned these one through fives, which generally are pretty straightforward, but not always, and there's room for discussion to go through that and each of the categorizations by priority. And work together to try to be in agreement as to what they are. But for what I'm going to present, I essentially, again, with a couple of exceptions, left everything in so that we could see what the totals look like and what the impact of those totals would be. And then from there, collectively try to make decisions as to, you know, what might we need to come out, because ideally, we'd be able, able to do everything. And then that gets into the question of what can we afford? Which gets into the question is, how do you determine what you care? Which is what I'll try to walk you through in the next few minutes with this. We could go to the next one. So we spent seven years developing a comprehensive plan. It really is a pretty incredible document. It's 2023 to 2033. It was adopted, and then within that, do you mind just going to the next? Let me go the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But is this the start or you want the next slide?
It's a few forward. I think you might have gone backwards.
Okay. Just say one.
Yeah, keep going forward.
Nothing's moving.
Cutting into his time, Dan.
I, I keep moving for, I didn't hear stop.
But it's not moving. It's not moving, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's, um.
No, it's a technology issue.
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to, um. I was trying to do two things at once. So do you, do you see the comprehensive plan slide?
No.
Oh.
Okay. Do you see it now?
Yes.
Okay.
One back.
One back. There you go.
Alright, so you're not.
Sorry.
On the right, but that's taken from the comp plan. It's the 2023 to 33 statement of goals and objectives.
Sorry, guys, that's me. Trying to get rid of this thing on the right.
Just hit the X on the right of that white bar.
Okay, thank you.
Statements of goals and objectives. So the top goals and objectives in the comp plan, one, protect the roads from storms, floods, and rising sea levels. That was, you know, the one priority identified. The second was to make streets safer walking and bicycling. The third with preservation, preserving existing affordable housing, create new affordable housing. Four, protect and improve the environment. Fifth, update the zoning code, maintain walkable village form. Sixth, support business development, revitalize the workforce. So the point with this is that we ideally want the decisions via what projects we move forward with and how our budget is structured to reflect the goals and objectives that have been developed through the comp. As a guide amongst other things. And then also, next, if you go to the next slide. So this is also taken from the comp plan. This is a 23 to 28 physical infrastructure improvements in a capital plan within the comp plan. And within that, you're not going to be able to see it, but there's a map and effectively nice to see that on that map, physical infrastructure improvements. You've got categories across culvert bridges, reservoir projects, stormwater drainage improvements, and sidewalk and pedestrian improvements. And then there are projects that are listed, and those projects largely appear in the list of projects that comprise the broad capital budget. But that cross referencing is really important, and we want to make sure that we're capturing everything as a starting point. You know, the next slide. So just briefly on funding sources, and I don't know if you guys can read all of this, but so bonds, grants, federal, state, or county aid, the reserve fund, which I'll speak to briefly, and the water and sewer fund. So bonds, I just wanted to make the point that the debt service on the bonds is paid for via the operating budget. So the capital budget that we're looking to adopt, the projects that are being reflected in that, the debt service, which is principal and interest on those projects, that's going to appear in next year's operating budget. So on some subsequent slides, for context, I put together just comparison of, you know, this year's operating budget, the debt service that we're incurring now relative to a you know, total project value, and then what that would look like. This gets back into the what can we afford piece if we take on additional projects, right? Right, we go to the next slide. Alright, so approach and analysis. You know, the next one. So background and current status. I wanted to start by saying here that just generally, looking forward is the best way to approach situations. But I think there's a really important need to look at kind of how we got here and to look back at some of the issues that we faced. And this isn't to implicate anyone in particular. There's lots of reasons for the things that I'm about to speak to briefly. But I think it's important that we understand what's been happening, what hasn't been happening, and then we can try to move forward and do things differently. So with background, the Budget Committee's sick of me saying this and probably sick of it, but for two of the last three years, there was not, there was no capital budget adopted. So that's an issue in, in and of itself. That's behind us. You guys adopted one last year. There was a resolution. We're moving forward, but that happened for two straight years in a row. So the Budget Committee, like during that period, had provided frameworks which the board adopted. But what continued really was a lack of transparency in terms of project costs, the status of the projects and prioritization. So we then came into this year and there was no update to the capital budget included in the tentative budget that was it was last year's copy into it. And then with that, there was no capital budget included on any of the work sessions. So it's not in the tentative budget. There's no scheduled work sessions, and that appears to be heading in the direction of you weren't going to have one. So with that, we have a 24, 25 draft capital budget that was submitted to you guys. Effectively did it. So it's obviously dynamic and work in progress, but that's where we are with that. It includes the updated status of, of, of projects, and I gotta say, Laura was phenomenal. Without a lot of time, she clearly knows what she's doing, put a lot into getting information quickly. And was really able to get the, the, the status of the projects that are live, that are via resolutions from you guys, current. And that's not something we've really had with respect to the capital budgets, to be able to look at what's live and then the new projects that we're looking to do going forward. So I'll walk you through that, and that's basically how that spreadsheet's structured, is that on the top, you've got the live ones that were resolutions. And then at the bottom, the new ones that are out there and the total of the two, right? Again, so there, there, there's the prioritization that went into the spreadsheet. You know, I assign those that can be revisited, and it's very easy to change. And then there's questions that are still outstanding that have been posed to, to staff who have been feeding some of the answers back. I think the biggest one that's outstanding is where the grants stand, because that can be incorporated into this going forward, and we can actually see, you know, what's grant eligible, what branch we have, and then that's going to help you know, smooth out the impact and, you know, help us determine what we can afford, but those are going to be important questions to clarify with respect to the grants. Alright, so to the next slide. Again, you know, this, this is going to turn more positive, but you know, just the findings are that the capital budget just has not been made a priority in the past. There's been a lack of accountability with it. Projects are then not being executed by priorities. And it's an unrealistic deficient capital plan that's led to lack of execution and oversight, and that's where we're at with this. And, you know, you can see, as I will walk us through the list of projects that have been submitted and what was actually executed, and it, it speaks for itself. So we'll go through that and then think about how we can try to do things. So the next slide, so process recommendations. This is more process rather than the budget itself. Monthly reviews with the board on project expenditures and the status, so that you guys have a rest of where things stand. Stat to develop a plan detailing project resources and execution. That's a critical, critical theme. Many members on the Budget Committee have, have been really vocal about that over the last couple of years is that being able to be realistic and being able to execute what is included in this is critical. I mean, we have massive, massive infrastructure projects that we're trying to tackle that are really scale wise beyond the scope of the municipality of the size. It's incredibly challenging lift. So we're looking at these things, the ridges and dams, how are we going to be able to execute? And that has to be part of this in a, in a really critical way. Considering hiring a permanent grant writer, I know that's been talked about. Back to this point, including capital budget projects in the departmental work sessions. So we have all this time dedicated to department heads coming and talking about their budgets. But it would be the engineer while he's here and he's doing his presentation that we could talk with respect to the capital budget about the Tompkins Avenue Bridge. How, how imminent is that? Like, you're, you're an engineer. Can you educate us that we have time here across a laundry list of projects that the expertise of these department heads being able to weigh in on is critical? And that would probably be more of a thing for next year at this point. The ship is sailing, but you know, we have the 15th. There's a little bit of time in between on some of the bigger items to try to get their feedback how to be able to make decisions. And with that, once this is adopted, you know, we can just pick right back up after it's adopted and keep working through this. You know, it's, it's a live, dynamic document. That's a work in progress. I just think that's important to stress. If you keep the momentum going with this after the budget season. And then establishing a debt service limit as a percent of the operating budget. That's the other recommendation that we, we've talked about. Alright, and then turning to the capital budget. So rather than pulling up the big spreadsheets. Go to the next slide. Okay, so this is the top section of the big spreadsheet. You guys can. You guys can't. Can you read that up there, I, I can't read that, okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I have it on my computer.
Dan, is there any way to zoom in on that?
Um, I don't know, let's check, it's, cause you're. I'm in a full screen mode, I'm sharing my full screen. So I, uh, let's see, what is it, uh?
One, one more over to the left, yeah.
Was that, was that?
No. The magnifying glass?
The magnifying glass are all the way on the bottom, you have to slide it.
Oh. Yeah.
As big as I can make it.
That here all the way to the bottom.
Is there something specific you wanna see? Or can we point out?
Really all of it, I mean, if you go to a full screen. That might do it.
Well, I think I'm already in a full screen.
Are you are?
Yeah, cause this is the, what I'm sharing is, I believe the. You won't see the one slide, correct? You see two slides, okay, let me try, give me one second, uh.
You have to get out of the, um. The presenter's mode.
Go into the slideshow mode?
Yeah.
That's much better.
Okay, I'm sorry, I. Yeah.
My, my eyes are going, so I don't know if you guys can read that, but I'll, I'll try to walk you through it, so basically this is the top section of the live projects. And I sub totaled, so on the far left column, it, it's by prioritization criteria. And it's subtotalled just so that we can navigate this a little bit easier than a laundry list of projects. So in short, via your resolutions, there were eighteen million dollars in. Open projects. Via resolutions, of which the. Expenses to date on the open are four point six million dollars. Right, and you've got a balance to complete of thirteen million.
So Charles, sorry to interrupt you there, how far do those date back?
Some of them dated very far back, that was via an expense control report, the, the first version of this I sent out had projects dating back to like two thousand thirteen that were still showing up. And there were only a couple that old, two thousand sixteen's, nineteen's. Laura was able to go through that and. Pick apart which were. Closed and also then provided. Information about bonds and if the, the, the bond was issued. For the budget on the project and there was an expense to date, it was pretty suggestive that we just closed the project. But they were still appearing on the. Uh, expense control report that gets distributed as being open projects. So she was very helpful in being able to. You know. Clean that up, if you will, and then. Now these are more current. But that being said, you know, there's thirteen million dollars of. Balances of, of work in progress or projects that haven't started that are via your resolutions, right, before even considering the new ones. So of that thirteen million, I spread that with some judgment, and again, that's part of the work is to. Collaboratively look at how that was done and did it make sense? And to, and to spread those into the upcoming twenty-four, twenty-five. Budget and then. Generally just another year out, so it's four, four point four million and another eight million. Over the next two years to get through those projects. So if we're really focused on twenty-four, twenty-five. Cause that's upon us, right, that, that's four point four million dollars. I'll get into it, but that four point four is almost the number. That was done last year and bonded, so. That's important on a variety of levels, both in terms of implementation and then where these numbers are gonna go. As a different, as additional resolutions are made throughout the year, right?
And the impact on the taxes.
And the impact on the debt service.
It's all the timing on when bonds are issued.
Yeah.
So you're making the assumption. I believe that that four million for twenty-four, twenty-five. Won't hit the operating budget until twenty-five, twenty-six. But some of it may be bonded sooner and could hit. Coming here.
But I think.
It'll be bonded during the year, so it could twenty-four, twenty-five.
And I think, I think part of this, something I guess I go crazy on, is the issue of capacity need.
Sally.
It's the board.
Microphone.
It's the board.
It doesn't matter, cause it's not, this is just Ellen saying.
If the board approves a project. A list of projects. Does the village have the capacity, either personnel or so on, to actually. Start it and finish it in some period in which. The vote is acceptable to the board and actually for public safety and so on. So the capacity as well as the financial impact that we have to execute and get something done. We really, really credit this.
It works for the operating plans and the good things for the planning.
Which is important. Because do we have like the police staff to handle, like, do we have? You know, the, the staff to even oversee it, you know, on a. So that it's done to, done well, so I understand.
Yeah, so those are the active, and then the next, you go to the next slide, so. You know, again, I took. The next one.
Dan, next slide?
Okay, sorry.
Couple of exceptions which I'll speak to, but I, I basically took the, the list of the projects. That were. On last year's budget. Assigned the priorities and subtotalled. And came up with the following. So. An additional four million dollars on top of the four plus of the active or that's coming there. The number then. The total is forty-nine million dollars. So four of it was this year, then it goes to ten. Twelve, twelve, nine. That's. Based on the projects and me using some, about how they would spread over time, you know, you're not gonna necessarily build. The Tompkins Avenue Bridge in a year, right, so some judgment, you know, real basic, you know, let's. Instead of it being lumped in one year, let's spread it over three or two, and I use some judgment, again, that can all be revisited, but. Those are forty-nine million dollars of the projects that are open for consideration that. The good news would be that in this year, you know, the, the four million there and the other four million. A little over eight million, and to put that in perspective. Based on current interest rates, and this goes back to the what can we afford question. You're basically looking at a hundred thousand dollars debt service per million dollars per project. So while we only did four plus million last year, we're jumping to eight, that sounds very alarming. But that's only four hundred additional thousand dollars in debt service. At the same time, we have a really tight operating budget, so if I was sitting in your seat. Where, where, where would we be able to find the four hundred thousand dollars? I, I don't know the answer to that question, and that's probably, you know, part of really the analysis, analysis and the deliberation. And there's other factors, you know, are we gonna get grants that would help with that, to be able to look at those things?
And when you say four hundred thousand dollars, it's four hundred thousand dollars every year until. It's paid off, because if it's four million, four hundred thousand dollars isn't paying it off.
Correct, yeah.
But this does not take into account, I believe. What debts being retired, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So there could be bonds that are.
Paid off, yeah, that are paid off and then.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it may not be. Total additional.
Yeah, it, it's a few, but if the operating budget was to the penny, let's say, and we had four million dollars of bonds issued last year, and we're gonna use eight. To Ellen's point, it's not gonna work out perfectly, but just for context, you know, it's. Call it four hundred additional thousand dollars that would have to come from somewhere. And then the numbers. Jump from there, I mean. I took a couple of really big things out of this to keep this at. If you go to the next slide, it's, it's the combination now. Of the active projects and then the proposed. So over five years, it's sixty-two million dollars, so it's, it would be nine this year, and then it jumps to eighteen. Thirteen, twelve, nine, for a total of sixty-two. So the eight to eighteen, you know. You, you, you can do the math, I mean, it. It's a lot, so. Where would that come from if we considered all of these? Two things I pulled out, just because we were, I meant six, we're at sixty-two million for five years versus a hundred and twelve million. I set aside the thirty million dollars for the Village Hall, just because it's such a huge number, and it would skew these. And the community center at ten million and like one more, just out of principle, the spray ground pays two per million dollars, so I just pulled those to the side. And that got us from a hundred and twelve million to sixty-two million. But again, that's going from four in bonds last year to nine the upcoming year, if we do all of this, eighteen. Down to thirteen, twelve, nine.
So even with pulling out those three big ticket items. We are, if we do what was proposed, we're on schedule to be spending. More in the next five years, you know, relative to our other budget than we've spent in the last. Twenty years on a regular basis, which is, we're really spending a lot more on capital projects.
But is, are we spending a lot more because of that? Things are needed? Is it like a need basis, not a want basis, but a need basis, and a reason why if, if things came to the Board. In previous year, like a decade ago, five years ago, whatever, two years ago, coming down the line. And yes, for, it, it, we approved things, but it was because if it was a need. Things were required, things were, um, needed to be replaced and things were expired.
It's a great question.
Trustee, yeah, as a re, you know, I may, at, at, the. Department heads are required to submit a. Capital improvement project worksheet, so they. There, you know, we asked them to justify the cost, and that was included. That will be included in the final. Version of, of the budget, so that, and that before the, uh. The public's review as, as well as the Board's.
I think a good, I, I. I think it's a really. Great question, and like, if you look at the. Four point seven million dollars from last year, and then you look at historical numbers, and we've kind of bounced around like. An eight million dollar number is being maybe a sweet spot. So what's going on with this, like, why are these skyrocketing, and we've talked a lot about that, and. If you look at the biggest projects, there are these huge infrastructure projects like the reservoir, multiple bridges. You know, just huge, huge infrastructure projects that haven't gotten executed. For, and, and that's not really.
There's a multitude of reasons why.
Multitude of why.
Yep, just, just as, as an example, an average bridge replacement. Is probably gonna run five to. You know, a, a person that carries motor vehicle traffic. You know, five to seven million dollars. And, you know, that's just kind of what these things cost now. Uh, Hillside cost us around, um. Four point two. I believe the town of Mamaroneck is paying, uh, in the high threes, low fours. For Waverly Avenue Bridge. Uh, I don't know what the, um. The town of Rye is looking at as far as. The Honor Creek Bridge, but again, I mean. These projects don't get cheaper over time.
The other thing, Dan, you might remember this, back when Rich Lindbergh was here. And, and this goes to, um, just to get through each question. Rich had put together a schedule for just replacing. Village equipment, whether it's DPW truck or, you know, whatever it was, just to keep things.
Running, moving.
Rolling.
Yeah, so actually, I, I mentioned that.
Letter, Dan, Dan, can you let her finish?
Created a steady state in the expenses. And I remember Jerry making a comment a couple of years ago about fire engines and so on. That one of the reasons why we're able to sell our equipments. For so much money is because we do turn it over before the expiration.
Yeah, and I, I had mentioned to the Board. Uh, earlier this week in one of these, uh, but, uh, one of these budget meetings. That we had developed that seventy-five year. Apparatus replacement schedule. But even in the intervening years from when that was developed, uh, you know, the lead time, uh, used to be. Twelve to eighteen months on a piece of apparatus. And now that's, you know, anywhere from three to five years. So that alone is gonna have us to, you know, cause us to, um, look at adjusting that schedule, so, but I, I did, I did bring that up the other night. When DPW and Fire had their presentations.
Right, but maybe that's something we should look at in terms of, do we. Need to replace all this equipment. At this time, or kind of be delayed another year or two years, which might smooth out some of this capital expenditure.
Yes, so some context with that, two fire trucks, right, are, are approaching three and a half million dollars. That's. You know, seventy-five percent of what we spent in total last year. Two items, but to Alani's point, you know, we have sixty million dollars worth of projects that we're talking about, fifty million in these ones. And if I go down that list. They just jump off the page, and we have a dam that's budgeted at fifteen million dollars. Right, right off the bat. And Tompkins Avenue Bridge is four, and a seawall we have at eight. I mean, that's low hanging fruit not to execute on, but to have. Subject matter experts in here saying, are we gonna really need to do that, and what's the urgency? Across all of those projects, because if it's urgent. We have a big issue in terms of how these costs are gonna spread over time.
The one, the other thing, and I, I'm sure Dana can attest to this, is. You don't, you don't just build a bridge now. You have to do all the, you have so many regulations. And environmental impact and everything else that you have to do. I think Dan, it took Dan almost two years in the planning stages. In order to get the, uh. To get the Hillside Bridge to the point where we could build it. And as soon as, even our own Committee for the Environment. Needed more stuff, and he, he, he was frustrated, you could ask him, it, it was, it was yeoman's work. To, to get everything in line and to make sure, you just can't build a bridge, you have to make sure that you don't disturb this. You don't do that, the seawall they're building right now. Down at the, uh, that the county's building, you can only build during certain times. You know, certain tides at certain times, they don't let you, they don't let you just go in there and build them.
Yes. Yeah, one other item, just to. I, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna divert from talking about the capital budget. But just in the planning process for the bridge replacement. We had to, uh, interact with, I think, about two dozen different agencies. So it, uh, that, that's part of the process, it's just. Gotta get done.
And with that, like. If you look at twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, just from, you know, proportional. You've got nine million dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five, and eighteen and twenty-five, twenty-six, we were trying to spread money away. And say, alright, that's, let's move money into twenty-four, twenty-five, so if you don't get this, it's eighteen million versus nine million. In twenty-five, twenty-six. But it speaks to what we're talking about, that. I wanted to do that, but when I looked at the projects that we would be doing this for, it wasn't realistic, so because of the durations. To execute on the projects and what needs to get done to get them off the ground. So that's creating this backlog that particularly if there's gonna be the urgency. In the future to execute these, that backlog's gonna hit us. Harder. And it's solid.
Point though, on some of those projects. It, I mean, I don't know the specific list of what's in twenty-five, twenty-six. But can some of the pre-work with agencies start happening in twenty-four, twenty-five? Which would shift a small amount of cost in, but at least start getting that. Underway, so we're. More ready to tackle the project.
And, and even, and even, like, do we need to do this then?
Yes, I live in Barbara Heights.
We need, I'm sorry, what, do we need what?
Doing, yes.
Do we, and if that's sort of that question.
The answer is gonna be yes, something out of any of the four options, yes.
Right, and Tompkins Avenue Bridge, are we gonna need to rebuild that bridge? Presumably the answer is yes.
Yes.
And presumably the answer is yes for.
All of it.
All of it, yes.
So. That's where we have. An issue.
Do, yes.
Scale of this.
I get it, and everything is about timing. And everything is about planning it out. And everything is about what we ha- what we're faced with right now. Because I can't worry about what was yesterday and we didn't vote on something last year or two years ago. We have to face what we have now. And the reality is. Is that even with the things with regarding flooding, when things should have been done. Or it should have been prioritized as decades or years gone by, we didn't do it. But we have to do it now and we have to figure out how to pay for it. So let's all help each other.
That's a que- question I have, alright, uh, cuz I have to leave in a moment, I apologize. Our reserve fund. Uh how much of that uh can we use before we start to impact our our um? Our uh. Uh debt service uh.
We effectively utilize the reserve fund to to as as basically a a a bridge line, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and and. That that requires a little bit of analysis, cuz remember.
Yeah.
We do use the debt service, I'm sorry, the the reserve fund. To advance uh payments for some of our capital projects. So we can uh consolidate our debt issuances. Um so it's. It's not, it's not as easy a question to answer.
Emergencies, but the thirty percent guideline.
The thirty percent guideline, so we're we're now at what, eighty, thirty?
So if you're on a, if you're on a fifty million dollar budget, the 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 reserve fund, you know, the on a sign would be, you know, fif- fifteen. And that if you were using that metric.
Alright, so that, so there's a couple of million dollars here.
Yeah, and I and ideally, it's reserved for emergencies and then we we also use it to save money on interest expense by giving it as the bridge.
Well, I mean, but you know, like, I always call it the rainy day fund. But literally, it's been raining.
And every day.
Regardless of 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 when we do these, if the consensus is, is that essentially. All of the infrastructure projects that we're listing are gonna need to get done at some point. And five years is still five years. That's sixty two million dollar debt spreads. With the debt service metric at the ten percent, you can see that, you know, we've got a a nine hundred thousand dollar. Debt service impact, twenty four, twenty five, up to a million eight, a million three, and a million two. This year, it was a four hundred thousand, so. But worst case scenario added these numbers. There are scenarios where there's a one point four million dollar increase in debt service. And take your pitch, you can spread it how you how how you will, but generally, it's about an extra million dollars in debt service. So where does that million dollar roughly come from? Going forward, out of an operating budget that was razor tight to begin with. And that's the analysis going forward.
To the mayor's point, that's not. You know, a a million eight hit one time only. That million eight is every year.
What a, what a.
Back debt paid back.
The ha- have you, have you looked at, I mean, lo- I mean, I I've been. Uh um al- alternative revenue sources. I mean, have we, have we, have we, we look, I mean, are you? Other things other than property tax?
That's where the. From my perspective, that's where the grant writer would be, probably a good investment. To try to grab as as much money as we can in terms of grants that are on the table that are out there. Probably some of the lowest hanging fruit.
But but there's 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 fees and services also. There's um uh, there's there's a. The my uh my. Pep idea is the uh is uh generating electricity at Taylor Lane, that could, that sort of thing, I mean, um uh.
But you gotta build that to.
Gotta build it, you, you, yeah, I mean, so um uh i- i- that that seems to me.
Also not, I don't know if that's a right now.
Well, as well.
But it's it's a future too, yes, to to to. I know, but.
So I i- in general, the, you know, there are municipalities that. Charge fees for a variety of uh services. So for instance. Some municipalities. Uh have a fee for garbage collection. Uh some municipalities have. Uh like other recreation fees. Uh some municipalities, I think I mentioned, um. What New Rochelle did is they have a uh. A a stormwater and a sanitary sewer fee. So, you know, there there are ways of looking at it. I again, I think that's um. Um i- in the context of. Funding municipal operations, which funds debt service. That's a, that's a, it's a uh concept and a discussion. Worth pursuing. But uh in terms of the. Uh the, you know, the the specifics of the capital budget or. You know, some of the philosophies around the capital budget. Um I don't know, I may wanna. Uh defer that conversation a little bit.
Yeah, but Dan, those three items that you just mentioned, it sets to these four. You're hitting the same population, that's already been. So all you're doing is making it from going over the cap, you'd love to call it something else.
I I I'm, I'd listen, and it's what municipalities do, I'm not. I'm not making value judgments, just saying this is, this is how some municipalities, you know, raise fees.
I understand.
Revenue, so.
From a taxpayer perspective, it's still gonna cost me the same dollar regardless, so.
Oh, I I.
It's gonna cost me the same dollar.
I I agree, it's it's just shifting it from uh uh a tax, uh paying, paid for through tax. To being paid through a user fee, it's.
User fees, yeah.
Yeah, I I I wasn't, I'm I'm not making advantages, I'm just. A uh. What 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 the approach is.
What?
You're taking, you have to take off.
I do, we do have to take off, too. I mean, wh- what, one of the things, I mean, there is um uh. Operational issues like uh, you know, backyard trash pickup. I mean, there there there's, if if there are things that we need. There are other places to find the money. Um uh and um uh, you know. That's, that's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Dan, can you just go?
Awesome.
One more slide and board.
Sure.
Maybe.
One minute.
Okay.
Alright, this is just a year to year comparison. So. Right, twenty three, twenty four was last year, we had twenty million dollars in the capital budget. We spent four point seven. The five year plan was a hundred and twelve, which was an average of twenty two a year. This year, again, with modifications. Down to nine million on the capital budget, we'll see where it ends up being. The five year went from one hundred and twelve to sixty two for the projects that I talked about and the average being twelve million. And then the last slide is just the recommendations where Lou goes. Right, the first is to limit projects to essential priorities, especially for the time being, until we work through this. Secondly, to clarify which infrastructure projects have an immediate impact on flooding and pedestrian safety. Still, like, a number of them probably do. I'm also not seeing. Very many, if any stormwater management projects in the list, there are a couple. And they were actually just added. But very void of stormwater management. In the list of projects. So which of those are eminent and urgent? Third, dedicate the necessary resources to execute the plan that's been. Then in particular, how do we execute on these? What resources do we need to do that? And then lastly, determining the status of of all outstanding grants and pursue additional wherever possible. Both after the lending of the grants and what you're raising, put our heads together and think about alternatives versus revenue.
I mean, the, all I'm sug- suggesting is that this is not a. This is a, an equation with more variables. Uh and fewer constants than we're, than we're presuming. And I think we can, we can make some of these other constants, like backyard pickups, things like that. We can understand that they're variables, they don't, that that's not gravity, doesn't have to exist. That's all. Alright, I I I'm.
Parking people. They can also check registration and inspections. Or Chester does this. And pick up the app, that's additional revenue.
I I apologize.
Hold that, Tony, then you caught me. I said, then you caught me, cuz sometimes I just, like, this past year, I literally possibly laughed like a whole month and did not pay attention.
And like, like, we had a show on it, you know, parking wars. And basically, they got, you know, it checks tick for tickets and it checks registration. And these things are so good, they just, they do an entire block. You you put the camera off the block and it'll say, this, this, and this car.
But it would be increased revenue that's not taxpayer based.
But what's the portion of doing it?
You talk about, you talk about cameras to catch speeders and red light violators, Glenn?
I think, I think part of the big picture for me is. That. I think certainly the uh, the the trustees who have been on the board. For a couple of years, we have increased fees. A lot. In including introduced new, some new fees, certainly say the building department fees and so on. I heard the mayor ask a question. Uh when the building department here was here, I believe, about two. Fees that were put in last year's budget, a hundred thousand dollars, I think for parking. The boats down at Harbor Island Park. I think it was about a one fifty for the.
The rental registration.
Now. That's, those are important things to consider. But the issues. The, I guess, Dan, Dan, I don't know, but I'm assuming. That those fees and perhaps others were put into the tentative budget to keep us below the tax cap. And.
It was part of the overall calculation. I mean, these are items that we had requested last year. Uh so, it it's not, I didn't. Uh uh it wasn't a a budget trick.
Well, okay, but we didn't collect the fees.
I collected some fees, but not.
So um. What's critical here, I think, from an affordability point of view. Is the question about the tax cap and the fees. And um. It's, I think, a very desirable objective to remain below the tax cap. As calculated by, out by the staff. Um but there's gonna be a lot of pressure going forward. With respect to the. From the capital side, because as the debt service grows. We have to figure out how to pay for that. Um and that's where the the balance, if you expect to the. Taxes that are imposed on village residents and fees and so on. So I think, I think that's gonna be a critical point.
But we also wouldn't be, continue to. Budget for fees. I know one of the ones that we haven't hit for years. Is renting the pavilion in the Farver Island Park. You know, we shouldn't have budgeted at the same amount, we'd never hit that number. So we should be budgeting that revenue with a more realistic number. But then we're coming in over the cap.
I mean, I think Dan and his team have done a great job, you know, trying to. Put these things in place, for all of this stuff in place, but it's it's. It's complicated. But the one other thing you have to remember with fees is. You collect the fees, but that means you have to offer a service and in most cases. If you, the the service you offer, the fees don't cover. Anyway, so basically, you know, the fee, the unfortunately, the best way to collect. Is through a property tax. That's the least expensive way to collect taxes in the village. We collect for parking tickets, by the time we pay the meter people and everything, we don't make a penny doing parking tickets. By the time you go through the process, there's just no money there.
Right, but if the person who made the parking ticket could look at a windshield. And look at the inspection and the registration.
And there's a machine, she need to do that, and I, and I'm, and I'm asking about that.
Talking about the machine. She gets out of the car today.
Yeah.
So she's already out of the car and looking at. The offensive cars, look at the windshield, do all three at one time.
Just, just one other thing is, you know, back to sixty million dollars of projects that are on the table. Lot of them being large scale infrastructure projects. If 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 I was the town engineer, and this is a five year capital plan, and I'm looking at the magnitude. Of what's in front of us. I I don't know that, like, no matter how good any one person is.
I'll look at how we're managing it.
How you would be able to even attempt to manage the scale of work. And then what happens is, is that. Given the resources we have. Or that any municipality. If they had our resources. It's not realistic, so this gets, this would, this will continue to get pushed out past five years.
Unless in the project expenses. We include hiring.
Project managers.
Project managers or engineering consultants. You know, part of someone assigned to the dam and assigned to the bridge and a spin it.
These are huge undertakes and, you know, relatively better way of putting it, you know, these people have, they're day jobs with the village. With regular operations, so to to task somebody like a town engineer with being able to manage that. I I think there's gonna need to be an investment in outside consultants to be able to help execute on this, cuz either massive.
Which raises the cost of all the projects.
But I mean, this is a, we haven't thought about the budget, capital budget this way, and we haven't thought about the capital budget in connect, in conjunction. With the operating budget, which we should, so. It's, I mean, it might feel a little gloom and doom, but I think we're on a path to think about what we're doing. So I thank you.
I also think one of the behaviors. That's been in place the last few years. Is department head showing up at a board meeting, I want, and they do blah, 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 do whatever it is they want, and the board showed it and kept the pass. And if A, wasn't on any list and B, it's certainly not prioritized, it's kind of, who comes in and asks? And I think we need to. You know, if in a week, two weeks, if this capital budget is approved, I think we need to stick to that. Except for emergencies, and we know there will always gonna be emergencies that happen. But no more, you know, handout, I want. And I'd like someone to move my house away from flooding, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, Nora mentioned this before, the town of Mamaroneck, when they have, when there was an emergency situation. What they do is they reevaluate their capital budget, what can, what can we replace this with, what can we push back? Or what adjustments we have to make in the operating budget? To to try to offset some of the costs, cuz just cuz something's a capital project, doesn't mean it has to be bonded. You can still, you can, you can bond a part of it and say, we're gonna pay some of it out of the operating budget.
And we, but we've done a lot of that, and and what, and I think to Ellen's point. We need a cap of about what we're gonna spend, like, what, how much of our budget is going to be. Capital and how much we're gonna finance and stick to that. And if something comes up, we have to make an adjustment, and we haven't done that. And we've just been approving projects because. Yeah, and we're getting to a point where it's gonna.
Thank you, what um Charles mentioned. You know, the debt service is a percent of the operating budget. This is something. That Tom and Fire Board had agreed to before we were. Agreed to doing. Of setting that limit, and I believe Lenny had done some research with the state and it was recommended to be between seven and ten percent.
Well, the, I mean, the controller is never really firm, but about thirty percent so that you could get through a period of months. If you really had an emergency.
No, she's talking about the debt, you're talking about.
Right, right, right.
To the operating budget, so. If our operating budget is, and we see math, fifty million and our upper limit is N percent. Our debt service, our principal and interest cannot be more than five million either. And that's something, you know, that we should. Use to guide what capital projects we're approving.
Just a, except for the board, we have Chief's side that starts at the seven P M, so. And the zoning board meets that as well, so.
Sorry, dear, but I really do wanna thank. Uh Dan, I wanna make sure, Laura and particularly Charles, cuz Charles has gone after this. And done a fantastic job.
No, he really did.
And um and Laura was a great help to him, so I wanna thank everyone for your explanation.
I thank you guys, I thank all of you.
And thank you, everybody, for having me.
Well, thank you.
It was, well, not yours, Dan, but um. Nah, Dan knows I love, but um, no, Charles, I really. Appreciated your, you, I mean, I know it's a group effort, but, you know, Glenn is stating that you put the hard work in. But I felt it as you were presenting and I also um. You mean business and I understand it, I get it, I felt it and I get it.
Okay, it's now six forty nine. So I make a motion to close the meeting with thanks.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.